Call to order for the council, Ellisville Town Council, Monday, July 11th, 2022. Pledge. Who has that? Who wants the honor of that tonight? Kevin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jimmy.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you this evening, we thank you again so much, this little town. Please continue to bless us and lead and guide us in the way of the C-Fit. Be with our council members and I as make good decisions that make this place a better place to live. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Mid-sized town. So at some point you're like, we have to be a mid-sized town. Even small, I'll take small.
All right, Sandy, when you're ready.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
And Scott Oldham?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
Darla Brown? Or Dan Swafford?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, June 13th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Epstein wasn't here.
Pamela Samples?
Epstein.
Darla? Had to do it again, you know, just for fun.
Is Darla a council member now?
Yeah.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, action to pay accounts payable, vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
First resolution, Resolution 09-2022, to dispose of surplus property for the police department, 2009 Dodge Charger and utility department, 2011 Jeep Wrangler. Are we taking these separately?
There's also four in-car cameras there I added.
Rad- and radios.
Yeah, okay, radios.
Okay.
Hello.
All right. All right, Jimmy, you got the first part of this?
Yeah, we have a 09 Charger that's really outdated, we just need to get rid of it. It's been in the fleet now for almost 13 years. Been a good car for us, but it's ready to go. Also, we have four mobile radios that need to be disposed of. We actually have six. These were, but two of them will use as spares. They're hard to, they're impossible to find parts for now, it's that older radio. But the two we want to keep are working, so we'll get those taken care of.
We also have a utilities Jeep, right-hand drive, that Meter Reader uses, and as you can see, it's a 2011. We'd also like to declare it surplus as well, we've replaced it.
Darla, we're going to-
Do both of these on the same resolution, okay?
I think that's fine.
Okay. Any council, actually, any public comment on it? Council action?
Um, I, question. How are we surplusing this?
Ours, we're selling on eBay.
All right, we're gonna go-
Gov deals.
Gov deals. I guess they've had good luck before using-
We did with the past service drugs.
Yeah. And we'll probably send out some emails, what the people, certain people know that we have it for sale. I think the Post Office of Rural Carriers might be interested, so we'll let them know locally.
Can I have the mileage? Do you know the mileage on either of those cars?
It's like 123,000, or it might be 133,000. It's probably got twice as many hours on it as it does miles.
Plus or minus 10,000 of 100 miles, 100,000, something, something like that.
And is there anything else wrong with them, or just?
Almost always, all the check engine lights are on, the 09 Charger, so.
All of our check engine lights work.
Does that mean they're on, or they're just working?
They're not on right now. We've actually, they're well-made, all of our vehicles in the town's fleet are well-maintained, but they get constant use, and like I said, the utilities Jeep, it's on the road every day, and if it's not moving, it's still running, and we use, use the lights, you know, the strobe lights, so we keep it running, and so it was just time to move to a new vehicle, and we kept it for 11 years, it's probably a few years more than we should have.
So, is this part of the program we're gonna be using to replace these vehicles too, that we discussed earlier?
It, it is not. We have suspended our lease program with Enterprise. They're having a hard time getting vehicles themselves, and so the fire department's been waiting for three vehicles for a year, a couple of years at least, and we finally called them, and we've cut ties for now, we'll go back to it. I guess we haven't, we still have a vehicle that we've, uh, have for planning, but because they can't get vehicles, all the new cars that anybody can get are going to the dealerships first. So it's easier for us to access vehicles through the dealerships, and Enterprise just, they're locked out because there's just not that many vehicles in inventory, new vehicles. So they understand, and when things, if things ever get back to normal, maybe we'll go back to it.
Did we sign a contract with them, or was?
No, I mean, it's just an agreement to work with them, but we're not beholden to them, and there's no financial penalty for not working with them.
We do have just one pickup truck through that department, and the planning department has theirs.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Jimmy, on the car radios, they've been deprogrammed?
They'll be, we're deprogrammed here in-
Deprogrammed?
Yes, it will be, yes.
Are you gonna resell those, or are you just gonna, like, dispose?
We'll sell those on eBay also.
Okay.
We'll, did you hear me? We'll sell those on eBay, yeah.
Yep. Okay. To council action?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 09-2022, dispose of surplus property for police department, a 2009 Dodge Charger, and utility department, a 2011 Jeep Wrangler, plus four in-car radios from the police department.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right. Resolution 10-2022, transfer of funds for the Parks and Recreation and General Fund.
These are just normal housekeeping things. Jimmy has a materials line in the parks that's out of money. We have money available in the Hoosier Heritage Trail and Town Improvements line, so we're just gonna move 3,000 up from one line to the other. On the administrative promotion of town business, our town manager is full of new and wonderful ideas, and he needs a little bit of money to make some of those smaller ideas come true, so we're moving some money into, some additional money into the, and I, I see an error on my resolution, so would you please mark out Heritage Trail Town Improvements, and that should be town manager's salary? Whenever I've, obviously, I just made a mistake.
And how much money is that?
5,000.
Was it four?
You know why it's not four?
Mike, Mike can answer that better than I can. I think that-
Kim, that was for the pads? The money's down?
Yeah. No, I'm sorry.
So far, they brought some sidewalk board signs for the food trucks, and they bought six picnic tables and some pop-up tents. Four or six of those.
It's to support the food truck. We bought, we bought equipment that we could also utilize for fall festival, town gatherings at the town hall, when people visit and we wanna do it outside. So we only bought equipment that we could use in multi-different places.
The sandwich board signs have inserts, so we can get different inserts printed for whatever the event is.
We can even use them in utilities for boil orders or announcements for certain subdivisions when nowadays people don't read the paper, and it's, it's a form of communication that we can use, so.
And then the planning one is just for fuel. And I figure that I'm gonna have to do an additional appropriation for fuel for several of the departments, including planning, but she's out now, the department's out now, so we're doing this transfer, and after we get through budgets, I'll do an additional appropriation for more fuel for departments.
And the additional appropriations will come from what, the general fund?
The cash in the general fund, yes.
Okay. Any council questions? Council action?
I move approval of Resolution 10-2022, transfer of funds for the Park and Recreation and the General Fund.
Second.
You okay? William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next we have ordinance 2022-06, establishing a police pension board. Darla, do we wanna take the police and fire board together, or do we need to do separate?
No, I think it's fine to take them together, particularly since it's just first reading. But in any event, as you're aware, as of July 1st of this year, police and fire candidates who meet the age requirement, pass the physical test, have to be in the 1977 retirement plan, they can no longer be in perf. And so when you join the 1977 plan, you have to have both a police pension board and a fire pension board. So the Indiana Code tells you how those are to be set up. There are differences between police and fire, I don't know why. For example, each has a seven-member board. Police has a president, which is the town council member, the town clerk is a board member, the fire chief, one retired police officer, and three active police officers. For fire, the board members are the president of the town council, the fire chief, one retired firefighter, and four active firefighters. And as you will also notice, there is an incredibly complicated system under fire for electing those people to the board. Honestly, I'm not sure why, because the 1977 boards don't handle any money. All the funds go from Sandy, when she does payroll, straight to Indianapolis, to the perf folks for investment, and so the local boards are restricted to signing the applications for the new firefighters and police, and sending them up to perf, and conducting hearings on impairments and disability. So as I said when I sent this out before the last town council meeting, it's a work in progress. I'm going to continue to look around and see if this really has to be this complicated, considering that my guess is you'll probably meet once or twice over the course of your careers, maybe. I, you know, I just, I don't understand why it has to be this complicated. But anyway, I mean, this is what the code says, the way it has to be organized, so. And Kevin Patton did catch three typos in the fire pension board ordinance that don't change the intent, but I will fix those before the next town council meeting.
And Darla, I'd just like to clarify one thing. It isn't the first, what date did you say, July 1st or January?
Uh, I thought it was July 1st.
Uh, it's January 10th, when we started?
We started it, but-
The law changed.
Oh, okay.
We started it then, but I think July 1st is when the statute kicked in, and everybody has to do it now.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
In case the public's curious, both of these boards are, there's no compensation for them, correct, Darla?
That, correct.
Yep. Yep. So, both ordnance, both ordnance have been read, we can move on to ordnance on the second reading. Seeing none. Any old business? See none of the agenda for that. Pledge report. Mike?
I have nothing to-
Okay. Envision Ellisville update? Seeing none of that. So we'll bring it down to new business. Fire department requests to hire two full-time firemen to fill current vacancies. Kevin?
Correct. This will, these two names I'm gonna bring you will be replacing Mike Korman after he retired, and Mark White. We did applications, testing, so on, and I would like to bring the names Ryan Purcell and Tanner Waldrup to you. Both of them are currently in the 77 perf plan. They're coming from other agencies, and so the only thing we're going to have to do is what we call is a fit-for-duty physical. It's the annual physical we do for every firefighter, to make sure they pass that. So assuming there's no problems, we'd like to see if we can get these two gentlemen approved for hiring.
Oh, was it Tanner Waldrup?
Tanner. T-A-N-N-E-R.
And what was the last name?
Waldrup.
Waldrup, okay.
Uh-huh.
All right. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, council action?
I would move that we offer a conditional offer of employment to Ryan Purcell and Tanner Waldrup.
Darla, do we need to amend the ordinance then, if we're making a conditional, or is that just kinda part of it because they have to pass their physicals?
It's gotta be conditional before you can even send them to the physicals. Yeah, they'll still have to pass their regular physicals.
I just didn't know if we needed to fix the wording of the-
Okay.
I mean, do we, Darla?
I think everybody understands it's conditional, so.
Fair enough. All right, so, motion is second?
Wait, I haven't, I didn't hear a second.
Oh, that's what I got.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, fire department assistant chief and sergeant promotions to fill current vacancies.
Yes. Well, with all the retirements and moving around of positions, we currently have a assistant chief position, a captain, a lieutenant, and a sergeant open. But for the time being, I would like to fill our assistant chief position and one sergeant. We did interviews and testing, and the name for, that I'd like to bring to you for the sergeant's position is Adam Yelich. And for the assistant chief is a current captain, Kenny Parish. He's been with the department 25 years, so, and looking to move him to the role of assistant chief. And these are all within the budget also.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, council action?
I'll make a motion to approve the fire department's request to promote Kenny Parish to assistant chief and Adam Yelich to sergeant positions.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is a memorandum of understanding between Ellisville Main Street, Chamber of Commerce, and the town-
Nope, nope.
Oh, I did? Sorry, yes, I did. Too much scribbling online, sorry, everybody. Yeah, exactly, Jimmy. Police department requests to upgrade the detective sergeant positions.
Yes, as Kevin said, you know, we have, we have a retirement that has been our investigative sergeant and technician. I'm planning on opening that job this week, and I'll, I need to upgrade it to a different rank, to lieutenant. That rank this year will cost us around $1,000 from now to the end of the year, and I have that in my budget to do that. Sandy has indicated that sometime after the budget is done, we'll reclassify that, that rank, and we can get that, but Eric won't be off the books probably until late July, early August, and that's when I plan on making the position.
So it'll still be detective, and just be detective?
Detective lieutenant?
Right, right. Now, this, this, there's another proposal in front of you for budget, this doesn't, it, this doesn't, this is different. This is the same position that I'm asking differently for, for the budget, but this is just for this year. So, I mean, not just for this year, I'm not sure what I'm trying to say here. But this need to upgrade for now.
So, Jimmy, I'm a little confused, so. Someone retired, and we're moving someone into their position, but you're wanting to upgrade?
The rank.
That rank. And is there anyone currently at that rank right now?
No, it's just a new, it's a restructuring of the department that we need for, for better flow of material and information for the rank when he goes to the scene of detail. He's the one that's gonna be in charge, won't be any question on that, so.
So his, the duties have changed from the person that is being replaced?
The duties have not changed, there'll be some added duties to him, yes, as he, when he obtains, when whoever moves into this position.
And you're, so, bear with me.
It's okay.
So you're wanting to increase that current level another $1,000, is that correct?
Right, for the rest of the year, that's what it costs for the rest of the year, no?
You're wanting to establish a new rank, codify chain of command.
Okay.
Say that again, Scott, I didn't hear you.
Basically, and this should have been done as the department grew, just, we never did it. He's trying to establish a chain of command, so he codifies what that is. So you have a chief, you have a deputy chief, and then it fell to three sergeants that were equal in rank. Here, he's trying to get chief, a deputy chief, a lieutenant, then the sergeant's over the shifts, and then the senior officers underneath that. So basically, think of a pyramid and a parent military structure, you have a rank hierarchy, and we have been devoid of that top merit rank for decades.
Right, and I understand that, and that's where the, where I'm a little fuzzy.
I think the terminology was a little fuzzy here.
Yeah.
Where we're not really upgrading, he's wanting to establish, while he's got policies in place that have indicated that that would be the case, we've never actually put force of rank behind it. And as the department continues to grow over the next few years, which we all think is gonna happen, he needs to have that codification done now and just be done with it.
So it's not really a reclassification of a position, then?
It kinda is. Where you're voiding out the detective sergeant role, and you're making that, that a lieutenant's role, and it's, it's pretty common that, you know, the smaller agencies do it that way, where the lieutenant is, the lieutenant becomes the detective lieutenant, and that's the entire division.
Right, and I understand that part. What I'm just getting at is, I just wanna make sure that we're not, um, because this should be done at budget time, if we're reclassifying a current position that was held by another police officer.
He's basically advancing the rank to get that, that done right now, so that by the time we come to budget season, we're already into that groove, and we really just frankly don't have to mess with it.
Okay. And Scott, I understand all that, I'm still just kinda curious, why just $1,000? And where did we come up with the number, and?
No, there-
Is there a new job description and that kinda thing, is what I'm concerned about?
The, my, my hope is, I like the way that the fire department is set up in their chain of command. We won't, we won't have quite as many command officers as they have, but I wanna, I like to, eventually, I want a lieutenant, an operations captain, then a deputy chief. And I took the difference between the sergeant's position and the deputy chief's position, divided that by three, and that's 200, $2,700 a year in the difference between a lieutenant and a captain, and a captain and a deputy chief. And then we're well over halfway through the, we'll only have five months left by the time this is made, so it's gonna be around $1,000 to finish it out this year.
Okay. Yeah, I was curious where the $1,000 number came from, so.
It's just, the rest of the year is what it'll cost us.
Okay. And could you, just for my personal, can you give me like a little organizational chart of the, the way the structure's gonna be after that?
The way the what is?
The structure of your department.
Yeah, mm-hmm, we can do that.
Okay.
We'll work on that tomorrow.
All right, appreciate it, Jimmy.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other council questions?
Thank you, Mr. Oldham, appreciate your help.
Just so we're clear, he's intending this to be a merit rank, correct?
Right.
So this would be the top merit rank within the agency, after that, it's appointed ranks.
I'm sorry. And no one else is gonna have that title, correct?
No, I don't, I don't see having two lieutenants, no.
Okay.
I would move that we approve the police department's request to create the position of detective lieutenant as the top merit rank within the agency, subordinate to the deputy chief, who's then subordinate to the chief.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now, memorandum of understanding between Ellisville Main Street, Chamber of Commerce, and the town of Ellisville, Ellisville, regarding envision Ellisville vision plan. Who has it?
This and the next four items are all part of the envision Ellisville vision plan, and Ron Taylor is here from the Taylor Group, and I believe he has a presentation. I can begin and talk about this a little bit, or we can start with Ron, or Mike Farmer, whatever the council's preference is, so.
Well, yeah, I think we could let Ron speak, but since we have completed-
Down on the, down on the-
Envision Ellisville process, we are ready to implement some of the ideas and plans that came from all the meetings, all the information we got.
Scott, come on.
Were you intending to promote the detective sergeant to detective lieutenant tonight, or are you?
No, we, first of all, first meeting in August.
Okay.
We have to, we have to clear the books from the former sergeant. He, money-wise, he won't be separated from the town for another four weeks.
Gotcha, sorry about that, Mike, and-
It's good. Is I talking about the vegetable stand? So anyway, so anyway, we, you know, we've heard from the community, we've heard from the chamber, we've heard from staff, you might even have heard from me, and we want to move forward with some of the envision Ellisville plan, actually, all of it. What is amazing for me, and what I think is excellent timing, is that envision Ellisville process follows and parallels the original comp plan that we already have. It parallel and follows for the last three years, everything I've heard from the citizens and what they want, we should do this, if we had $1 million, we oughta do that, blah, blah, blah. So then when we do the envision Ellisville process, all these things just came back to us, and, and the plan itself is truly a community vision plan. So there are a lot of things in the plan that are what I'd call capital projects, everything from building trails, to building new parks, to having a task force to help us implement transportation plans for the future, things like zoning and code upgrades. All of these things have been brought to light and been put on paper, and we want to move forward. So with our memorandum of understanding, we will join forces with the chamber and Main Street, and we will channel some of their vision and things they might want. We will channel everything in our comprehensive plan, and the projects that I'd like to do, the projects that the staff has talked about, working on, and we will utilize the memorandum of understanding to have a agreement, and it'll allow us to move forward in a orderly way.
Yes. The intent of the agreement is to keep the status quo in the sense that Main Street and the chamber are going to continue to work on these projects, just as they have been for the last year or so, and they decide their organizational structure, and they will periodically come to the council with their ideas, which the council can adopt or not at the council's pleasure. There is a shift in the sense that the Taylor Group was helping Main Street and the chamber put together the plan, and so the Taylor Group is familiar with the plan, so the town, and you'll see later on in the agenda, there's the contract between the town and the Taylor Group. So the town's essentially going to step in the shoes of Main Street and the chamber, and have a contract with the Taylor Group, who will sort of serve as the go-between between the town, Mike Farmer, Planning Street, and Main Street, the chamber, and the town council. So.
Okay, we're not voting on any of this tonight, are we?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
We absolutely should.
Well-
Have you heard the question?
Yes, we absolutely should.
No, I'm not.
We're not voting on this.
On the memorandum, yes, but we're not signing a contract tonight, correct? That's what you had told me.
We're doing the memorandum of understanding, and then the second portion of this is to sign an agreement, a master agreement for professional services. It does not lock us into paying any money or doing anything without board approval, but it will structure fees if and when we decide to move forward with any of the projects, and so, we would like to have that taken care of. And then, third, and the first task that we want them to be involved with is helping us get the next level trail grant that we already have from DNR off the ground, provide professional services that we need for design and-
Engineering.
And engineering, thank you. And so, that, this will be their first task, and it will be the largest one of all of them. And originally, we, we have seven tasks that we would like to look at, and I can talk about those later, but the first task that we need to get off the ground is the NLT grant. We, we absolutely have engineering and professional services that we will need to be implemented, so we meet DNR's requirements or the money they're giving us.
Is that in the packet? I did not see-
It's in a folder that Darla prepared for you.
Okay, so that's-
Yeah, y'all, y'all got this in an email over the weekend, actually, Friday night.
It was also in the packet that I sent out, but Darla, I didn't see the need to put it in this packet, since she had prepared the notebooks.
Okay, there's some other information that we got, some Friday, some Saturday, including a 35-page thing from Darla. That's a lot to take in, to go through and read real quickly and vote on, in my opinion, because, I mean, when you look at that thing Darla sent, that isn't something to read through real quickly. You want to analyze it or look at it. I mean, 35 pages is a lot of pages, and I'm sure everybody didn't have time, or if they do, they have a different life than I do, to sit on the weekend and just read 35 pages. I mean, there's church, there's things you do on Saturday night, you get up Monday, you don't have all day to sit there. I think this should be put off and tabled on any vote on any of it, till the next time.
I respect what you said, but since we started the project with the next level trail grant, it was always known and talked about that we would need engineering, surveying, professional services, they'll want us to have certain design sketches and schematics and what have you, and that, and we applied for the next level trail grant how many months ago?
We turned it in last, near the last November.
Yeah, so, we've had that going on since last November, so, the memorandum of understanding is, is like a couple pages.
It can wait two more weeks, right?
I, I don't think so.
Give us time to really look over everything.
I, well, if, if the board wants to do that, that's fine, but we've been on this path for a long time, and putting things off is not how you, how you have progress, and the staff's looked at all this information, Darla's vetted it, and I think we're ready to move forward.
Well, it's not been off, it's just in reality, like I said, we got a lot of information thrown through the email on Friday, and then Saturday, you sent out an email, we're more stuff that you set in there to process, and I just think, I mean, personally, I'm not one that likes to run through things like that quickly. I mean, I want to be able to really look at it and analyze it.
Can I make a suggestion? Since we're here, we could start going through what's in the notebook, because not all of it is new, and then, if upon review, the council still sees fit to table some or all of it. But in any event, the first two documents are the resolution the town council passed back in May approving the Baker-Tilly ARPA plan for the town, so that's the first two documents, and that's pages one through eight, and I included that as a segue to the Envision Ellisville plan, so you could see the overlap between the ARPA plan and the Envision Ellisville plan. So, our plan, the town's plan for ARPA funds, is flood remediation and grants. So, there's overlap between what we want to do and what Envision Ellisville wants to do. So, page nine and the next few pages are directly from the hard copy of the Envision Ellisville Vision Plan that Main Street and the chamber put together. So, this was, these are documents that were presented to the community at the meeting here back, I think, on May 17th. So, page nine is a proposed organizational structure, which shows the town council at the top, the Envision Ellisville group is in the middle, and then, at least according to the MOU, what will happen is Envision Ellisville will determine their own structure, whatever they think is best, and again, my thought is that they've done a good job so far, so let them continue to do what they've been doing. They pick their boards, they meet as often as they want, they decide who's going to be on the boards, and then occasionally, they come to town council whenever they think it's appropriate, and make a pitch or suggest ideas, but that's up to Envision Ellisville. So, that's the proposed organizational structure, page 10. Again, this is directly from the Envision Ellisville plan that was presented to the community on May 17th, and I think part of these, I don't know if they were on the town's website, but, I mean, if you Google it, they're out there. So, proposed initiatives, these are, these projects are what, Main Street and the chamber, or these are the task forces that will discuss the various initiatives. So, you've got a gathering task force, connectivity, branding, beautification, housing, and business. Eleven discusses the foundational projects. Again, these were discussed, discussed at the community meeting on May 17th. Twelve discusses the various projects. Plan A is task order number one on tonight's agenda. F is task force number two on tonight's agenda. Page 13 is roles and responsibilities. 14 is communication, discusses how the boards will communicate with each other, and then 15, 16 is the discussion of who to involve. So, all of those pages came from the Envision Ellisville plan. So, really, the new stuff starts on page 17, that's the memorandum of understanding, 17 through 20. The master agreement between the town and the Taylor Group is exhibit one. And then, resolution 11, 2022 is on page 26, and that's just the resolution approving the master agreement, and the reason I drafted a resolution as opposed to just having the council vote on it is because I thought it would be a good idea to have language in there, making it clear as to why the town council is selecting the Taylor Group to do this, and it's to ensure a smooth transition on the commencement of the proposed projects, since the Taylor Group has, like I said, assisted Main Street and the chamber in putting together the plan. And then, we have task orders number one and two, which, as I said, are actually projects A and F on that previous page.
Were you a speed reader, Donna?
Uh, no.
You lost me at the first page.
Okay, well, it, it took me, okay, in fairness to everybody here, it took me three days to do the memorandum of understanding, and I don't mean like three eight-hour days. I mean, for three days in a row, I would, I drafted it, I revised it, and I looked at it again, to get set in my head how this was all going to work.
Right.
So, and so, it is going to take some time to, if you decide to accept that proposal, get your head wrapped around that, so.
And I agree, I mean, this is a lot to process. I, I do realize that a lot of this is redundant, but there's still some new stuff in here, and I'm, there's a couple of big concerns for me. One, we don't have a planner yet, and I know this is probably a different question, but, you know, I, and I apologize, I've been gone for a while, I've been ill for a little while, but, you know, I don't know where we are at in the process of hiring a new planner, I haven't heard nothing about that. So, to me, this seems like something that would be big, that the new planner needs to be on board with. And second, has this been brought to the planning commission yet? Because this affects them a lot, too, and have they seen any of this?
No, not to my knowledge.
And are we going to let them have any input on this, or?
Why is this?
Well, I mean, there's a lot in here that deals with planning and different processes that the planning commission had a lot of action on before-
You're not voting on that?
The whole plan in itself is talking about things.
What plan?
The one we're talking about, Mike.
The vision plan?
Yes.
Okay, well, I just want to be clear.
Yes.
I mean, we're, rent spent, plan-
Yes, so, I mean, if we can, and I can see what Pam is talking about. It is a lot to process, yes, it's been going on for a long time, but the two big concerns I had was planning department, and I don't know Denise, I haven't talked to her yet, or the planning commission, so.
The one thing the planning commission is looking for is to get the, our zoning and-
Codes done.
Yeah.
Right.
And this answers that.
Yeah.
I say, and this, this answers what to do about it.
Well, they haven't heard anything, is my point. They don't know anything about this.
They know that they need to upgrade their zoning and planning, and so, we are saying, we have found the people we would like to work with, people that have been, a company that's been embedded-
It'd probably be nice to tell them that.
Pardon?
It'd be nice to tell them that, though.
Tell them that, please, then.
Planning commission, Mike.
Well, and, and all I'm saying is, we're bringing before you today a plan to implement some of the things that the planning commission wants. Everybody says they want it, and we, we have somebody that's been embedded in our community for almost a year now, taking in all the information-
I understand it, but I'm just wondering why we're rushing tonight through this.
We have been working towards it for years, for months.
I agree, but there's new information here that has been brought to us in two days, so I'm with Pam on this. This is a lot to process right now.
Mike, I understand that, though, if I'm wrong. Tonight, we're simply entering into an agreement with the Taylor Group to begin this entire process. There's no action taking place beyond that, that commits the planning commission to do anything, that commits us to do anything, because there's multiple times in this document that says that the town council has ultimate authority to yea or nay any project that comes forward.
Exactly.
So, right now, the only thing we're doing is selecting a partner to move forward with. So, this has, and I understand what you're saying, Dan, and I agree with you, and I agree with you, Pam, as well. If you're going to digest the entire document, that would be one thing. Here is just simply the continuation and selection of a partner group to move forward with, as opposed to, we're going to do everything in this book exactly as it says. Because like you, I've got a couple of questions on some of the paragraphs, and I think I would like to see reworded a little bit better, but that doesn't affect this agreement that we're signing tonight. That affects the minutia that comes six months down the road, or a year down the road. Am I wrong on any of that, Mike? Tonight is just a agreement.
No, no, I mean, I mean, we're trying to prepare ourselves to work through all these problems, wish lists, and plans that we have for the town of Ellisville.
Right, and this is all important, so why can't we wait two more weeks, so we'll all be able to question? Give us two more weeks, have a work session to go through this, like he said, he's got a couple of paragraphs, so that gives us two more weeks of time. Two more weeks is not going to hurt anything.
But my questions have nothing to do with agreeing with Taylor. My questions are for the operating principles after the fact.
I'd still like to wait. I think two more weeks would not hurt to wait.
And I'm happy, don't get me wrong, I'm happy that this is being done and getting done, but let's put on the brakes a little bit here. This was laying here in my, front of me today.
Well, when you put on the brakes, nothing happens, but you stop.
If we table it for two weeks, it's not going to hurt, and we let the planning commission know, too, in case they have questions. That's all I'm saying.
No, hang on a minute.
Hold on just a second. I, I do, I want to interject real quick with this. We have momentum, I think I, okay, we have momentum from Envision Ellisville and the plan they put together. This is just basically saying, we agree in principle that something needs to be done. Now, first of all, for the planning department issue, if I'm not mistaken, I think any type of contract that would have to be entered in with a company, the town council makes that decision anyway, correct?
That's correct.
So, I'm not understanding why, we've told, not planning department, sorry, planning commission, sorry, Denise wasn't, but we've, we've given instructions for two years now on things we'd like to see, and have seen nothing come out from them. So, at this juncture, I mean, we've been talking about this, and talking about this since I've been on the council, in one shape or, way or shape or form. We are not signing anything saying we're doing everything this to the letter, it's just an understanding that we agree in principle to work with these other partners, Main Street, Ellisville, and the Chamber of Commerce, to work on this in the future. Ultimately, the town council still has to approve everything.
And we are going to ask you to approve moving forward with the NLT grant. I have to have somebody do it.
So, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Dan, but we, I just wanted to get that out there, I, the planned, the part, the planning commission thing, it's just, you know, I understand they, we've already asked them, and it's, nothing got done, and I'm frustrated with that, on that, so.
And I guess, William, I want to ask for clarification. What have you been asking for two years?
I've asked for two years, as an example, your, the zoning that allowed those apartments that you voted for, not to repeal that zoning, to not have zoning like that.
What part of that repeal are you wanting?
I, well-
No one can build apartments again?
No. The C3 zoning, you're allowing apartments on top of commercial, just because you take your marching out orders from Bloomington, the city of Bloomington and the way it's done, I don't think the town of Ellisville should. And I've asked and asked and asked-
Those apartments were not built with commercial underneath them.
They originally were, by right, they could have been.
They're not.
That was, not now, because you guys approved going otherwise, but by right, they could have been, because somebody was asleep at the wheel and thought that could have happened. Right now, on Sales Street and Temperance, we can have a commercial building with apartments on top.
And, and, William, I appreciate your opinion, but personally, I like commercial underneath, so that's just another person's opinion. So, asking for that for two years-
Well, you asked for specific, I gave you specific, no, I haven't even heard that, that discussion brought from the council, or anything.
Wait, so who are you saying are doing their job? Because it's Dan and I and Sandy on the planning board, so are you saying we're not doing our job?
Has, have you guys had a discussion on that?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
We have had several discussions, we worked with Kevin to tell him some of our ideas, he put some, you know, out for us to say yes or no, and at that time, he started working on a proposal for, what is it called, RS?
RFP.
RFP, and we, he was, had it ready by the time he left to get, you know, get a firm to help us redo our zoning.
And that's what this is?
Yes.
That's, that's what I'm saying, that's what this is. It's something that they couldn't do on their own. It's no fault that they can't do it on their own, it's just, none of us had the expertise that the Taylor Group or some of these other places we could have considered have. The Taylor Group, though, has it, because they've already worked with Ellisville.
And, and I'd point out, we don't have the staff either. I mean, we've got a town that's moving at about 70 miles an hour, and because of our staffing and some meetings and no meetings, we're running at about 30 miles an hour here at the government.
Denise, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to stay with your scheduling for a future meeting to discuss it, the planning commission's next meeting is until August 3rd, because somebody said wait two weeks on the planning commission, but they won't meet till August 3rd.
Which is ahead of your deadline?
The president.
Well, I mean, we can speed up that meeting with a work session, with planning and them, we could have that in 48 hours, so.
Okay. Lisa.
I'm, I appreciate the town council and the years that we've been able to work together, and I just-
Do you have to remind some of your-
Yes. I'm Lisa Cisco, I'm president of Ellisville Main-
Yes. I'm Lisa Cisco. I'm President of Ellisville Main Street, and with me is Donna Neesh. She's President of Ellisville Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to thank you for all the work that you've done in the past years. And in the past, Ellisville Main Street has memorandum of understanding with the town on multiple projects. And as you might recall, that when we started the trek of coming up with a shared vision, we started out with a memorandum of understanding with the Ellisville Main Street, with the Chamber, and with the town to go after a grant from the Community Foundation. We identified that as Phase 1. We completed that on May 17th, when we had a public event right here, and we invited the community to come in and see the compilation of all the remarks, of the community surveys, the works, the focus groups, and the input from the website from all the community members. And I believe people from the Plan Commission, the Town Council, the employees, everyone from the community was invited to come and be familiar with the project. And it's available on the website and has been since May 17th. This is a hard copy example of what that result is. And, and we have been, I think, working feverishly to try to come up with what we can do next, knowing that there's ARPA money, there's the pressure for the next level grant. So while you might not have been seeing all of the activity, there's been several of us spinning our, our wheels as fast as we can. We've been having meetings with Taylor Group and asking them to help us to come up with a proposal. This is modeled after Huntingburg, which they have a successful long-term relationship with Taylor Group. And that's part of the reason why we selected Taylor Group, because other communities have worked with them for years. They have high-level professional technical skills that's hard to find, and it's hard to keep, as you're seeing now. Aside from Denise and perhaps Mike, I would say that Ron Taylor knows more about our planning documents than anyone else in the room, and we wanna keep that and keep that going forward. And we, we had the May 17th event, there's June 17th and July 17th. We're almost 60 days beyond that, and we've kind of thought, what do we have to show for it? So we felt like we were under pressure to present something to you. We also knew in the meetings is that the Plan Commission's not slated to meet until August, which would be another month. So we feel like we have owed you to get something quickly. So I'm sorry that it seems like we're throwing it at you, but we have been working really hard to present something that makes a lot of sense. And we've broken it down into pieces. The Town Council has all of the authority, all of the delegation powers, Main Street and the Chamber. We're not responsible for any of the decisions as far as what gets done, what doesn't get done. What we want to do is share with you the ideas from the community, to present it to you as recommendations for your consideration. So I hope at least we can go forward with the memorandum of understanding. It's a memorandum, it's not a contract. It's to give an idea so anyone can see it. A memorandum starts out with a lot of wherethes. It's a historical document, kind of showing, how did we get here at this moment in time, and how are we gonna go forward? We've had a positive relationship in the past, and we wanna keep it going forward that way. And we, the plan, when you read it, if you haven't already, and we hope that you have, it calls for task forces, which is also representation from a lot of community members, to get involved so that you're always getting some feedback and suggestions. And Kevin was a part of it, and we, we know that with the Planning Department, that holds a big piece of what we're gonna do in the future. There was at least 47 points in the vision plan that had to do with the comprehensive plan. If we don't get that updated, then we're kind of stuck. We're kind of doing things like what you've experienced, is you're making decisions and not having your government foundational documents to support it. Or what we wanna do is have that guiding the growth, not coming behind the eight ball, so to speak. And we've seen from, if you've been here for a long time, like a lifetime member of, I have, I've seen, you know, a lot of the growth in Ellisville has been splattered, it's been automotive-focused, and now we want to, to be more sensible about it. We're not saying we wanna spend a bunch of money. We wanna invest in our community. So our kids wanna stay here. We wanna attract people to live here and to work here, and have a place when they come home, they can do things here without having to go somewhere else to spend their dollars and spend their time with their families. So I hope at least we can move forward with that memorandum of understanding. And I totally support having Taylor Group because of their knowledge and their investment in our community. They've been here for months now. And this is what we consider Phase 2, that we've already embarked on this project, and we don't wanna see it slowed down. We wanna help support the town in your efforts to help grow Ellisville community. Thank you.
Darla, I have a question, too, on the RFP that was sent out. Was the Taylor Group the only one that responded to the RFP?
No. There were 21 companies that...
No, I, I'm sorry, Lisa, Darla is who I was asking.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I don't know who responded to the RFP earlier, but there was no RFP sent out for this portion, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I, I was under the understanding, it was sent earlier by someone that, an RFP was sent out for this agreement.
It was prepared.
It was what?
I think Kevin was preparing one.
For the comprehensive plan.
No, for the zoning and subdivision update.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Main Street and the Chamber had... Main Street and the Chamber had put together a RFP to hire Ron Taylor.
And two council members here were part of that, too. You were part of the vision of the RFP?
Yeah, and I was, too.
Yes. We actually had 21 companies that responded and wanted to provide their services. We went through the process of narrowing that down, and we interviewed them, asking them questions. We also contacted other communities to get feedback on the relationship with Taylor Group and the other companies. And we settled on Taylor Group. We felt that they had the most broad-based knowledge and a deep bench, that they had resources, that they can go deep. And we're seeing that now, because they can involve other people with the particular expertise that's needed to get the job done for Ellisville. And...
Lisa, I don't mean to be cutting you off, but I just had questions for legal. So will we be paying Taylor Group from now on?
Yes.
We will.
Only if we use...
Right.
The memorandum of understanding, and the, the second document only sets up how we would go about business, and what we'd pay for hourly use of their staff, if in fact we used them.
And, am I correct by law, we would have to send that out, correct, Darla, or no?
No, well, it's a service. Not to make things too complicated, but when I went to the municipal law seminar a couple of weeks ago, there was a discussion about the ARPA plan. And when the guidelines, and that's not the word they use, first came out, we, as municipalities, were allowed to hire whoever we wanted for a service without advertising. That changed, but what we were told at the seminar was, if we had a good reason for not doing an RFP for a service, that would be acceptable to the State Board of Accounts or whoever audited us. So that's why I put some of the language that I put in the memorandum of understanding and in the resolution. It seems to me that if we turn around and do RFPs to hire somebody to carry out a plan, that the Taylor Group has already kind of started, at least, to put together. It may cost you more money, but I think it's gonna cost you something in time if someone else has to come in and get up to speed. So it's a service, so I think we take the attitude that it's a service, and the town can hire who it wants. And we have good reason to stick with the Taylor Group, I think.
If I may, it qualifies as sole source anyways, because of the intellectual property the Taylor Group already has.
Right. So basically, if, if we did RFPs and the Taylor Group didn't get it, we'd have to kind of start all over again. So I don't think that's an efficient use of time or resources.
So how much are we paying them? I mean...
Well, what do you mean? You mean when?
Taylor Group.
Well, we'll pay them for their services. It's in the rate fee that's on page... The memorandum of understanding is nothing. Nothing, yeah, the MOU is nothing, and the master agreement only says how we're gonna go about business. And it also has fees for if we actually implement any work, that, that, it tells what per hour they would be paid.
Okay, are we gonna have a, like a cap on it, though? Like how much that we are gonna pay them? I mean...
I'm the cap, or you're the cap, really.
I think each project would come to us individually to be approved. This is not a blanket, go do what you want.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm not saying it right.
Thanks.
What I mean is, like, we know our budgets, so it's not like we can just free-range. It's like, okay, we can pay you for projects to do and stuff up to a certain amount, like $60,000 or whatever.
No, each project would come to us individually.
Right, but don't we have to have something throughout the year, though? We can't just...
For instance, for instance, let me give you, for instance. So the Stewart property, we've talked about making it a park. It's a perfect place for one. And so I can't do anything to get the ball rolling until I have a site plan that's been drawn up and designed that, so we can go with it to the DNR and start talking about the process, what they will and won't allow us to do. So they have, it's E on, it's E here, on, I think it's in here. It is for $15,190.
Page 12 is on the list that has all your task orders.
And it has an amount for each of those tasks on your not-to-exceed amount. That's what I want, the not-to-exceed.
So another, for...
So that's page 12.
Another, for instance, is a schematic design of downtown park and streetscape, and that would go along with our flood mitigation. And they have quoted it at $17,670. So if we come in and change something, or we say, hey, we wanna do a little more downtown, or we wanna put this wall up, can you design that as well, then that might be added, and, and the rates, the, the hourly rates might be utilized to add to the $17,000 that we agreed on. But that would be a change order, and we'd go about our business in front of the board and move on.
Task order number one is for on-call program administration and technical support. And then page 29, which is page two of the contract, says that the Taylor Group will be paid, or their fee won't exceed $60,000 without prior written authorization. So it's in the task orders where the fees are, are set, not the master agreement. Think of the master agreement and the memorandum as the overarching global, what word do I wanna use? Just the global plans for how these task orders are going to be implemented.
It's not unlike our, our consulting with Baker Tilly for accounting and, and money matters that they handle. They do a rate study, they're doing a rate study right now for water and sewer, and they give us a set fee. But also, sometimes they do the IER-C report at the end of the year, and we have a master agreement with them, where they say, we'll do that for a rate, and, and it's not to exceed so much, so many dollars, but they, you know, they, they don't necessarily tell us how much it's gonna be, they just tell us how much the cap is.
Right, that's what I mean, I do, I just want the not-to-exceed, because we do have a budget, so I mean, obviously, we need to kind of stay within that budget. So like, if we tell them, oh, like, we only have $50,000 this year that we can spend, we don't wanna go over that.
I'm well aware of that, and, and I'm supposed to make sure that doesn't happen to you, and that's why we're going through this process tonight.
I, I did ask Darla the same question when I saw the spreadsheet and the cost. You know, how are we gonna pay for all of this? And her response to me was, the ARPA funds...
The ARPA's gonna take care of a lot of it. Not all of it, but...
The next level trail grant that we want...
Right. Denise...
I'm sorry.
That's okay. The grant that Denise got is going to be funneled toward a lot of the design, too, so.
So Plan F or Task F is gonna be paid from the grant?
Right.
And I'm going to ask you to allow us to proceed with that tonight. You don't have to, but I'm gonna ask you to.
What, with the grant?
I have another question, too, Darla. I'm looking through this plan, too, and, so are we, I, I mean, by law, we have to have a Planning Commission, but is none of these projects gonna go in front of them?
No.
Well, the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the only one that might's going to be, well, it's the comprehensive plan. But the rest of these projects, not necessarily. I guess it's going to depend on, you know, what the plans are. But, I mean, I see your point about letting the Plan Commission know about this, but unless they involve development plans or something like that, Dan, they're not gonna go before the Plan Commission, so.
Well, on the zoning code update...
Right, that will.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
But, but the, the... Go ahead, Darla, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the parks development, that's more Parks Board bailiwick. I mean, I'm not saying that the members of the Plan Commission can't get involved and give their ideas, and certainly the Planning Director's gonna be involved, but...
I mean, the first thing we'll do when we get to updating the comprehensive plan and zoning and code, the first thing, the Taylor Group, help me out if you need to, but they're going to go to the Plan Commission, they're gonna set up meetings and, and bring in all the information, and make sure everybody's thoughts and considerations are taken into account, especially the Plan Commission, before they go to a plan, a comprehensive plan, or do anything to your zoning and code. Obviously, there's difference of opinions on this board, so they'll make sure that they get everybody's opinions before they move forward. It's not like we're saying, hey, we don't need the Plan Commission, hey, we don't need anybody, let's just, we're gonna do this and have somebody from out of town take care of it all. That's not what we're talking about here.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's what I'm getting from reading this, though.
Well, then, so...
I don't know what's... That's what I'm very concerned about. Darla? If we, if we start trusting them to follow our codes and our regulations and stuff, then what course of action does any of the public have if there's a code violation or something like that?
They're not gonna be in charge of the zoning and code. They're just gonna help us put an updated version up of what we want in place.
Right, but typically, the way it works is, the Planning Commission would initiate the engineering designs and things like that. That's how we had Rick Koppick and other members, that used to start there, and then it would come to the council for the final vote on some issues.
I did not realize that the Plan Commission was, had plans to do that.
What do you mean?
Well, I didn't know that you guys were already started on a comprehensive plan and the zoning and code update.
We've had a comprehensive plan since the town has been a government.
I know you've had one, but what I'm saying is...
Initiated from the Planning Department.
What I'm saying is, you guys were not, I was not aware of any plans for you to move forward with any of this. This, this was to help you and to respond to your needs.
No, you're not understanding what I'm saying, Mike. I, I'm...
I'm not.
I'm worried about the projects, is what I'm saying. The projects listed here would normally typically go to the count, or to the commissioners for their technical review, and we had a technical staff review, blah, blah, blah. It would be signed off through them and gone to the Plan Commission. So my question is... Go ahead. Are we deleting, we gonna be deleting the Planning Commission?
Well, wait a minute, I got a quick question here. Darla, the Planning Commission does not have oversight of government projects, correct?
Correct, unless it...
The project somehow involves the planning and zoning code, so...
So, again, since most of these is the government, i.e. the council approving these projects and paying for them, they are government projects that have no oversight by the Planning Commission?
But we usually have input.
Yes, yes, because that's not a true statement, Scott.
And then we make a recommendation, and then we present that to the council.
I just asked, and she said no, that you did not.
Well, that's not true. I can give you a for instance. The trails, it started with the commission.
No, we're not talking about starting with. We're talking about if we decide we're gonna build a trail, and we wanna build it wherever, Planning Commission can't say no, you can't build it there.
No, but that's where it starts.
No, but, okay, Dan, but here you're wanting to put the Plan Commission in front of the Town Council, and that's not how this works.
No, I'm not doing that.
Yes, you are. This is a government...
I'm trying to keep them in the loop, is all I'm saying.
This is a government project. They're not in the loop of a government project, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Yes, they were, Scott. I've been on the commission for 16 years.
Dan, I just asked the question, do they have oversight of government projects? And the answer was, no.
They don't have final say, no.
Dan, do, do you think we were gonna keep the, the Plan Commission out of the loop for a comprehensive plan and zoning?
That's the question I'm asking.
Do you think we would do that?
By reading this, yes, I do.
For the, to, to follow up on what Michael said, I think the plan is for the Taylor Group to come meet with the Plan Commission with regards to revising the zoning and, the planning and zoning code and the comprehensive plan. So they would put... So, they would put together a plan that the plan commission would approve, because those have to be initiated by the plan commission, and there are certain public hearing requirements before both the plan commission and the town council, before those can be passed. So, the Taylor Group is just helping the plan commission put these things together. Annexations have frequently, well, always, started with the plan commission, because I think that's the way Spencer set it up, and I liked that, so we continue to do that, but there's no requirement under the Indiana Code that that occur, that's just the way we've always done it. Otherwise, the only projects that have come, that are going to come before the plan commission are development plans and things of that nature. So...
Dan, one more time. So, the Taylor Group and this whole plan and this whole proposal is, was meant to all the different aspects of our town and how we want to grow and, and make our community better. It's all designed to have, have a setup and a source where we can move forward with everything like comprehensive plan. I mean, there's, we do not have the staff to do it, so we're setting it up so the plan commission can get involved, and the Taylor Group will organize the community events where you bring in everybody to decide, you know, what you want. It'll be just like the Envision Plan, and, which was successful and well-done, very professional. And so, we're setting you up with the source so you can move forward and make the plan commission be able to make better decisions with a new upgraded zoning and code enforcement.
Okay, we've got a lot of discussion on this, and we could probably stay till midnight tonight discussing it. But the first thing on the agenda before everything else is the memorandum of understanding between Main Street, Chamber of Commerce, Town of Ellisville. We're discussing a lot of the minutia and stuff that, you know, contracting with the Taylor Group and stuff like that, spending money, but the first thing to do is, is on that. And do we have council action on the memorandum of understanding? Yeah?
Public comment, we do have chat, we need to read it, the comments. Or you want to wait till later, or...
Well, no, let's, let's open this up to a brief public comment.
This is from Russ Ryle. It says, what about using the phrase "enjoying" Ellisville as our branding? And then, is Envision Ellisville and the Chamber usurping the town council's responsibilities to undertake the much-needed updating of our plan?
I, I would, first of all, yeah, I would, no, and also, on the...
I don't even know what "usurping" means.
Taking over, taking control. On the, I appreciate his suggestion, I'm sure Envision Ellisville does, but we went through, you know, before COVID, planning for these things, and I think the community decided on Envision Ellisville. And that's one thing I encourage the council to remember, this isn't a plan from the Chamber or Main Street or us, this is the community of Ellisville that has come through for this. So, is there any other public comment on this? Come up to the speaker. Introduce yourself and...
Hello, my name's Noel Conyer. I would like personally to see the town continue using the Taylor Group. Every Envision Ellisville event that I've been to, they've been extremely knowledgeable, and when you ask questions, they have, you know, answers. They've, I feel like, done a lot of community outreach to get everyone involved, and I would hate for us to have to spend time bringing in someone else to continue this project moving forward. We've already established a great relationship with them, and I feel like it would really put us back, I mean, even a couple of years, if we have to basically start over from scratch with somebody else, because I feel like that's what we would be doing if we did not enter this agreement with them to continue moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Valerie Duuar, Chamber and Community Businessperson. I appreciate the fact that what I've heard here is that you got information in what you feel is a very short time to become knowledgeable about, is that correct? And like you, I want to read the fine print and make sure I know what all the loopholes are, and I get that. The one thing I am having difficulty with is two things that Lisa said and one thing that is town history. One thing Lisa said was, in the beginning, we had a Phase One memorandum of understanding. This is only Phase Two. So, when one signs memorandum of understanding one for Phase One, one would sort of expect Phase Two to be coming. So, while the document in front of you may have been very shortcoming, at the same time, being very knowledgeable for the year or so that this has all been going on, I'm not so sure a short time of a printed matter in front of you is the greatest deal to break this whole idea. The second thing is that we are talking budget, and I hear that word, but let's remember, a great much of this is coming in from grant money, and that grant money is not necessarily going to be in that budget, and that's a big help. The third thing is that we sort of all got on this bandwagon together, and while you didn't have anything to do with picking the Taylor Group, I think that a strong vote of confidence to the two organizations you're partnered with would be to say that you have that memorandum of understanding and, and enter in with Taylor because of the, and that would be a show of confidence for the two groups that you have, you have agreed to work with. And I think that's important for the elected body of our community to do. The last reason that I have for wanting to see this move forward quickly is because our town has already had a history for many years of not moving quickly. Let's think about flood control, for one, and how many years we did not move forward with that, and, and, and even if we did, we didn't hear about it. We want to keep this in the forefront of all of the community. It's not just called Envision, it is the vision, and without working on it, that vision will be lost.
Okay, do we have any council action on this?
Well, I have two quick questions on the memorandum of understanding, or at least addendums. On page eighteen, paragraph two, where we speak to the, Main Street and Chamber will determine organizational structure, and then there's some contemplations there, and I guess where it says, Main Street and Chamber shall exercise their discretion selecting the board, or shall choose, I would like that to read subject to council oversight, or council, however you want to say it.
Okay.
Likewise, on number four, just the wording is a little clunky, the only thing that we ask there is the same thing we've asked our individual departments, where it says, Main Street and Chamber may engage in their own separate fundraising projects. I, I think, because it says funds dedicated to Envision Ellisville projects shall be submitted to council for its approval. Is that after the fact, or is that before the fact?
The intent of paragraph four was to make sure it was clear that Main Street and Chamber can always do their own separate fundraising projects. It's just that if they have funds they want to dedicate to Envision Ellisville, they have to get council approval.
My only thing on that one is I'd like to know ahead of time, because it may conflict with a grant that we may put in for as a corporation, the town, and that way, we don't run a scant of each other and kind of X each other out.
Okay, I think that's readily fixable, so...
Just so we get notification, not that we stand in the way of it.
Right.
But just so we have notification that you're going to do it, so we're not doing it, and again...
Okay, so how about if we change paragraph three to read, the board and subcommittees will notify the town council prior to applying for grants?
How, how do you want to do it?
Number four, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's number four, yeah.
And then, can we mention how we've done it in the past?
Again, just ten years from now, none of us may be involved here.
Okay, so let me tell you why I did number two the way it did I did, and why there is some clunky language in here, because I am in possession of a public access counselor's opinion, where an attorney thought it was a good idea to have an organization, a municipal subdivision, appoint some, a subcommittee to review some plans and report back to the political subdivision. And the, somebody made a complaint to the public access counselor, and the public access counselor agreed and said, if it looks like the municipality is telling the subcommittee what to do, and in particular, if the municipality is appointing those people, it looks like it makes them subject to the public access. So, my fear is that if we went down that road and the council started telling or even recommending who's on the board, then the Main Street and the Chamber would be subject to the open door law. So, I know there have been town council members who've served on some of these Envision Ellisville boards, if they want to serve and there's no more than two of you, that's absolutely okay, but I wanted to keep the status quo and let Main Street and the Chamber do what they've been doing. So, if I've misunderstood you, tell me, but my intent was that, not that the council get involved in their business.
Not necessarily, that's not, that's not what it's intended, I realize it may have come up there.
Okay, so tell me what you're thinking.
Basically, what my fear is, is that we should be in possession of, of knowledge of things that we're going to do in the future.
Sure.
If unknown to them, we know there's a project coming up that will dovetail in, and yet, there's a selection of a board member or multiple board members who would benefit from that, I, I think the town has to look at it and go, is there some type of special circumstance there that they shouldn't be making decisions that they will profit from in the long run? So, I, I don't want to pick, I don't want to nominate, I, I just want to be able to say, no, timeout, those can't be on the board right now. Does that make sense at all?
Yes.
So, you're trying to prevent a conflict of interest?
That's where I was trying to say much more eloquently what you just said, but you're, yeah, I failed at it, so, thank you.
Okay, so you're...
What I don't want to get is Envision Ellisville, Main Street, anybody accused of trying to line somebody's pockets who's on the board just because we're about to let something happen that we know is going to happen that you don't, but that unbeknownst to you, you're going down that road where it is going to be a conflict of interest very quickly.
And that's why I said we have a memorandum of understanding.
As long as we're all clear on what the memorandum stands.
Exactly.
How about if we say, Main Street and the Chamber shall exercise their discretion in selecting the organizational structure they deem most appropriate, and may not implement the exact organizational plan depicted in Envision Ellisville? However, the town council will be notified as to the board members, something like that? That's what you want, right? Just to know who's on the board?
To know who's on the board, and, I guess...
Okay.
May I add, going forward, Envision Ellisville, we plan on having task forces, which we have a composition of...
Right.
Members of the town council and others as liaisons, so that we are aware of what each other's doing.
Right.
So, we're, we don't want to work in a vacuum or in isolation. We're always going to want to be working together, so you know what's, what's going on.
Again, my intent of the agreement was to basically keep the status quo, with the exception of the council now steps into the shoes of Envision Ellisville for purposes of retaining the Taylor Group. I think, yes, it behooves everybody to, to talk to each other so that we're not doing overlap, and so people aren't going down a path and working months on a project only to have the town council later say, this isn't going to work.
Right.
So, how about...
How about approval? Just a who's on the board. They can nominate, they can put whoever they want, but we reserve the right, I guess, for want of a better word, like a judicial nomination for the Congress, is a yes or
We do have an executive steering committee for the task forces, and so, the small group, Mike Farmer, is a part of that, so he will always be representing the town.
Not so much worried about the task forces, I am to make up the overall board.
Well, that, that's part of the, the organizational structure that we thought would go, work well best for us, that we can break up the task forces by different functions and different geographic...
Yeah, I'm not so much worried about that, because with no disrespect to them, they're, they're kind of the lower-level functionary of getting the ideas pushed up. What I'm worried about is the decision-makers in that middle before it comes to us.
Well, I, we have the leaders of the task force, and we have the executive steering committee, and Mike is a part of that, I would be a part of that, Krista Cook, or Krista Curtis from Cook Medical is a part of that executive level, so there's nothing that's going to go on that we aren't aware of in those task forces.
Well, with respect, Lisa, you're all part of it now. This document very well may be here five, ten years from now.
Well, we want it to grow and evolve as needed, but right now, for the next near foreseeable future...
But you're asking us to approve a document right now that I'm looking at, ten years from now, may still be here?
We can modify it as needed, it's, it's just how we can...
That's what I'm asking for right here, is a modification.
I'm bringing all this up, this is pushed too quick. We need time to study all the little ins and outs of this, and I don't understand why this board is insisting we pass this tonight. I don't get it, guys.
Just to keep momentum going, like, so many people have worked so long and so hard and given hours and hours, and I know Pam said earlier, you know, well, I don't know what kind of life they have, I think we all have very busy, similar lives.
What I meant by that is on the weekend, no?
No, 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 I, I understand.
What I meant by that is on the weekend. I have church.
Right.
I do things on Saturday night, so you got to take, if I'm getting information on a Saturday night, and then a thirty-five-page information, I mean, does that give me a lot of time when it's illegal stuff?
I don't want you to take that, that I was being disrespectful, because I am not. I'm just saying that for over a year now, we have put a lot of time and effort, and we just don't want to see that slow down, that's all. And we're just, this Envision Ellisville is just to bring ideas to the council, and then you guys would approve or disprove any of it.
And I appreciate that, but, you know, let me ask you a question. If you had a document like this brought to you the day before, would you guys approve it? No, you would take time to work on it and study it, and that's all we're, at least that's all I'm saying. You know, I'm happy with what Envision's done, trust me, I'll probably love all this thing, but it just, why send it to us the day before, or the five minutes before the meeting and expect us to sign off on it? It aggravates me, it's offending to me.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, I did this document, so I sent it to the council on Thursday...
Friday.
Like, we normally do.
It was Friday, because I seen it today, that's my...
You seen it today?
Yeah, but it was, it was on Friday, yes.
And then, I sent you a, another email Saturday morning.
Sunday night.
Saturday morning.
Okay, I'm not arguing with you.
Well, it was not Sunday night, it was Saturday morning.
I didn't see it till Sunday night, so I'm sorry. I, I don't look at my emails every day, I, especially on weekends.
It, may I reiterate, part of the reason why we felt like we needed to rush through this is because of the calendar and with the plan commission meetings, and Kevin was a part of our steering committee for Envision Ellisville, so he was aware of what we're doing, we had his feedback, he had conversations with Taylor Group. And might I also say that when we mentioned Taylor Group, they're, they're the ones that helped us get to this point. If the town wants to do an RFP for different aspects or subprojects, they could even assist in helping with those specifications and designing those documents.
And the RFP was just a personal question for Darla, because I wanted to make sure that we were following normal regulations that we've done for years, so obviously, that has changed, so that was my question.
Well, and there'll be multiple RFPs for some things that are not so professional and that high-level expertise, that when, if there's something that multiple companies, it makes sense for them to bid on, maybe a streetscape project, a hardscape, that multiple companies could bid on, we're in favor of that, competition's good for the customer. But in, for us right now, we want to utilize the expertise that Taylor has developed, they've invested in us, we've invested in them, Pam mentioned earlier how much we're paying them. I might remind you that for, to get to this, we had a thirty thousand dollar grant for the community foundation, community businesses and individuals contributed another about thirty thousand dollars, that's how we got to this document.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I appreciate it. Yeah, I appreciate that, I appreciate it.
So, it's not Envision, I put this in front of you, it's me.
I agree.
It's your town manager, and I did not rush it. Well, let me finish, could I finish, sir?
One thing, I have not put anything on Envision.
Can I finish?
I'm on this, I'm mad at the council. I'm not mad at you, I'm not mad at Envision, I'm mad at the council for trying to push this off in five minutes, one day.
Yeah, well, and if I could talk, I would, I would talk about that.
We've been talking and beating it to death.
Well, listen, I wouldn't want to spend too much time on town business, I know we're all in a rush.
I'm in no rush.
Well, then let's talk.
Real quick, can you ask a question on a rush? I don't really look at this as a rush for the memorandum of understanding, because we've been working under memorandum of understanding for Phase One for almost a year and a half, two years now, and this is just a continuation of that.
So why push Phase Two in five minutes if we've worked on the other for two years?
Cause Phase One's been complete since May 17th.
Okay, and this one came to us today, Phase Two, and you want us to push it in five minutes? No.
Do you recall the...
And, and I hate to vote no on something because I'm aggravated that we don't have time to study it, because it's probably a great plan.
Well, yeah, I don't want to interrupt. You can.
So, in agreement, the MOU, the master agreement, I think that builds our momentum. Is, would there be an issue waiting on the resolution and the two task orders to give more study time?
Well, we could, but I, I'd like to speak to that.
As, as a compromise is what I'm asking, is can we go and get the ball rolling with the first two, and then...
The resolution just comes in master.
Yeah, exactly.
That, that's what, well, I, I, listen, let me, let me talk. That's what gets me about this. The MOU and, and the master agreement, um, yeah, you want to wait on it, I don't care, but I, I, I have a next level trail to build and needs design, we're meeting with DNR next week.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, and we've been talking about it for a long time. This is our second time attempting to get it. So, there's nothing rushed about this, except we need to get done. Well, I, well, you smirked, but it's not rush, you've known about the next level trail forever. And wait a minute, let me finish, let me finish, please.
When was this brought to us?
Listen, I want to finish.
Let Mike finish.
So, the Stewart property, we've been talking about building a park there for months, if not a year, we bought it a long time ago, the schematic design on the street scape, we're doing a flood plan down there, what do you want to do, just leave it rough on the edges? It, it's a, it's a perfect idea, I mean, what's so rushed about that for you, Dan? And then, the comprehensive plan, you said it, you said it, we've been wanting to do something about that for two years. So, what in this has been rushed?
Mike, I would just give the...
I'm handing it to you.
Right, that's what I'm getting at. We're talking about all these projects that you said we're dragging a feet, blah, 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 but don't give me a day to process all this.
You got it Thursday night or Friday morning, and then I, I sent you an email Saturday to say, hey, look at it, please, and call me, did I not say I'll come out of my...
You should have called me if you wanted me to read it before then.
All right. Is there, is there not council action on this?
Uh, Mr. President, no, right now, Mr. President, I'm calling the question.
Can, can I have a, a quick moment?
There's a motion on the table.
All right, let's...
Oh, who made a motion?
I did. Called the question here. We're moving forward, or at least I would like to move forward, at least on the memorandum of understanding between Ellisville Main Street, Chamber Commerce, and the Town of Ellisville as amended, and Darla will give you the thing here in a minute.
Second.
Paragraph two, two-thirds of the way down, the sentence that begins Main Street and the Chamber will have control over their board, and the subcommittees then will set agendas and meeting dates and times, I'm going to insert language after that with the council's approval, it says semicolon, however, the council reserves the right to veto the selection of board members or task force members. Is that fair? Is that what you're getting at?
Yes.
Okay, the number four, funds dedicated to Envision Ellisville projects will be submitted to the county, town council for its approval prior to Main Street or the Chamber applying for the grants. So that way we don't have any overlap. Is that fair?
That's, yeah.
Does that capture your intent?
Yes, that would be my amendment.
Okay, I'll change the document then. Okay.
Do you get my second?
Yes, you want to do it. Oldham?
Is, yeah, please, if you got a second, yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Daniel Swafford?
Abstain.
Pamela Samples?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Okay, next on the list is the master agreement for professional services between Town of Ellisville and Taylor, Seifker Williams Design Group LLC. Is there council discussion on this particular item, not on everything else, but focus on this item? Okay, I know we had somebody with public comment before, I don't know if he left or if he...
Is no one going to discuss this agenda item?
The master agreement for professional services. Mike, did you want to discuss that then, real quick?
Well, yeah, without causing any worries, this is just the mechanism that we use to enter into an agreement with the Taylor Group if and when we decide to use them on projects. It has a rate structure and, or rate fees, and then a structure on how we would go about our business, and it talks a lot about who's responsible for.
Did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, let me make sure, correct, and then hopefully I can simplify some things for you. So, what you're looking at is a master agreement, it's, it's very simple to a memorandum of understanding in that all we're doing is establishing the terms of our relationship. We're not assigning work, we're not assigning dollar amounts, we're not assigning anything other than to say, as we work together, these will be our terms. This is the, these are the insurance requirements, this is the liability, the indemnification, so whatever work we do is covered that front end by this. You could sign this tonight, and we could never do a piece of work for you, you could sign this tonight, and we could do a lot of work for you. This could be in effect for 100 years, it could be in effect for 100 days, it's, it's the way that we've set this up, and I have a little presentation that I can, I don't know if now's the time to do it, but the way that we are trying to, to help give you a little bit more control and to feel more confident about the work moving forward, is to do a master agreement so that we all understand what those terms are, and then use a series of task orders that very specifically defines work, schedule, and, and budget for each project. So all the master agreement is, is the contractual relationship between us. If we work together, these are the terms. And, and just to, and Mike, I don't mean to correct you, there are no rates assigned in here, there's no dollar amount associated with this, that comes with the first task order.
Right, at the, towards the end of the pack, I believe. Would it help the council to see the presentation?
I would like to see it.
It's short.
Give me a second.
Okay.
You had me at short.
Short and concise, I'll try to be as concise, and I won't go deep if you ask me to go deep on something.
And, did you put your name into the record?
I did not. My name is Ron Taylor, I'm with Taylor Seifker Williams Design Group.
Ron, not before you're about to call us, or...
Enter it on. Enter.
Is it not on?
My name is Ron Taylor, I'm with the Taylor Seifker Williams Design Group.
Is that coming through the speakers? I mean, I can hear him fine, I can hear him.
I, I forgot the signup sheet, so I'm writing down the speaker.
Okay.
So, let's go ahead and move, we'll move kind of quick through some of this, and I apologize, because I think this could have helped your entire conversation you just had, but...
Want me to go inside?
Um, not yet, just stop right there. So basically, when we think about the work moving forward from the Envision Ellisville vision plan, there's three types of things we're talking about, and we're trying to sort of get that ball rolling tonight. So, you can go ahead and switch this. The first thing in the Envision Ellisville is what we called foundational projects, so there are some things identified that are more the policy lead that you need to take, like things like the zoning update, the comprehensive plan update, a trails master plan, those are big, community-wide projects. So there's a level of those that are recommendations from the plan. Okay, go ahead and flip on. The second thing is, there's a series of, and you can flip another one, the second area of implementation is the focus area projects. These are very specific projects that are highlighted. So Michael has mentioned the downtown flood control project, or the Stewart property, these are defined chunks of work that are part of those recommendations. And then if we can flip that on a little further. The third part of it is the organizational structure, and that's what you're really doing here tonight with the memorandum of understanding and the master agreement. The question becomes, you've got all this energy and all this inertia that's moving, and all these great ideas, and the community is like engaged and pushing forward, well, how do you organize them? How do you keep them moving and keep them working towards what some of these recommendations are? So the first steps was to say, I think that Main Street and the Chamber are saying, we want to continue the relationship we had with the town moving forward. And so that memorandum of, of understanding that you were just talking about really is just establishing that relationship so that you're continuing what you started. I know there was a Phase One and Phase Two talk, but it really isn't a Phase One, it's a continuation of that relationship. And if you notice, just, there's no dollar amounts tied to that, there's, there's no contractual requirements that are linked to that, just like with our master agreement, we're the, the work side, we're the laborer side of how do we move some of these things forward. So let's go ahead and flip. The way that the proposed organizational structure works is that the plan outlined a series of, of task forces of interested individuals. Now, this is going to sound a little funny, we want a conflict of interest on these task forces. Like, the business task force needs to have business owners that want to push the business agenda, the residential task force needs to have people interested in housing, there's no authority in those task forces other than idea generation, there's no money-spending authority, there's no, um, there's no policymaking authority, all they can do is generate the ideas, and the group in the middle there, that board, it's the same way. All they're doing is trying to make sure that all of these task forces are funneling that energy through one place that then comes to you. So even that board has no fiduciary responsibilities, they have no ability to spend money or to, to make final decisions, that still all rests in that layer above, which is the town council. Next slide, please. Does that make sense? I think there were some questions about that, and I think that that's an important distinction. Let's go ahead and go past this, and go one more. So, in terms of your agreement with the Taylor Seifker Williams Design Group, we're, we're a, a company with planning expertise and with landscape architecture and design expertise, and so the way that we've set this up, we've met with town officials, we've met with the chamber officials, we've met with Main Street, and there's lots of those different foundational projects, there's lots of focus area projects, and there's lots of organizational efforts that are needed to kind of keep this going. And because it was so varied, we decided that what we would use as the master agreement and task order concept. So when you look at that master agreement, again, that's the contractual terms of our relationship, and then it even says in there that we, every project or every bit of work that we're going to do for you will come in the, the form of a task order, and there's a sample at the back of the master agreement. And so, the only thing not defined in the master agreement is the specific work, the number of hours, the budget, and the schedule. So even if you sign the master agreement, again, there's no financial responsibility tonight from signing that. Each type of work or project we're then doing will come to you, or will come to the town as a task order. So we have, let's go ahead and flip that again. So tonight, what we've done is, this is sort of the, the overall structure of what you're being presented tonight and what's coming next. So, the master agreement is the first item, again, I'm a little far from it, so I can't read those, but this is very similar to the chart that you have in there. There's no dollar amounts attached to this, there's no required amount of work, this will be a, will be dictated by task orders. The next slide shows then, what we've done is, we've brought two tasks, or two task orders in front of you tonight to have you consider. And these two task orders, the first one is called an on-call administrative assistance and support task order. So when you start thinking about how we move those task forces on, and we start to function with all of this, there's no staff to do it, there's nobody to help facilitate that. The Taylor Seifker Williams Design Group, we will not be doing the work of the task forces. What this task order allows us to do is to help facilitate and operate them, meaning that we can be used at a specific hourly rate to help make those things happen, to help facilitate those meetings, to organize those meetings, record those meetings, and move them through the organizational structure. Since we don't know an exact number of meetings or an exact amount of work, this is done under an hourly contract, so we've provided our hourly rates that we will charge to do this, and as Councilwoman Samples mentioned, there is a max on this. We don't know how much work, there could be $10,000 worth of work, there could be $60,000. So what we've done is, we've put a cap and said that we will not go above a certain cap without a written authorization to do so. So that's the first task order. The second one, and this is the one that perhaps has a little bit of the urgency to it, is for the next level trails, you've received a grant application from DNR that includes a set amount to be paid for engineering and design fees. You're on the clock for that, meaning that your design has to be done by a certain time, construction has to be completed by a certain time. So, Michael didn't say this, but I would say this is the one that probably has a little bit of urgency, simply because the amount of time it takes to go through the engineering, the design, and the permitting process, and then still have enough time to construct it, that clock is kind of ticking. So what we've done is, we've submitted a task order, this one, we do know what the work is. So when you look at your task order, we've provided a very detailed scope of what we'll do, an hourly estimate of what it'll cost us, and a lump sum amount of what that will be. So, that's the second task order. Next slide, please. In talking with representatives of the town and with the other groups, there are four additional task orders that we've prepared that are not up for approval tonight, and again, these get back, Michael has already mentioned several of these. One of those is a master plan of the Stewart property, one of those is a, a master plan for the street scape design that's tied in with the flood control project downtown. The third one is an on-call planning services to allow the town to use us for other planning levels at certain hourly rates if they choose to do so. So those three are kind of grouped, and then the fourth one was what Councilman Swafford was getting at with the comp plan update and the UDO. So, I'll just go through this real briefly, the, you've got a comprehensive plan that's in place, and the Envision Ellisville that was just completed builds upon those goals and objectives. So, the only thing that is missing from the Envision Ellisville that you would have in a normal comprehensive plan is the land use component. Envision Ellisville looked at focus areas but didn't look community-wide, and in order to update your zoning and subdivision control ordinances, you have to have the land use component to be updated. So what we've proposed on this is updating that land use portion, and then having the community re-adopt the Envision Ellisville as the new comprehensive plan, and then build the unified development ordinance off of the recommendations of that plan. That was what's shown as the third task order, but that's not one that, that is in front of you tonight for approval, because that needs a little bit, I, I think that's one that you do need to review in a little bit more detail before it goes. But hopefully that gives you an explanation. That process would include, just like the typical comprehensive plan or a zoning rewrite, that process would include going in front of the Plan Commission, would include working with the Plan Commission, and working with the town council on all of those. That procedure doesn't change just because it's being done through this Envision Ellisville. So I don't know if that helps... So I don't know if that helps, or if there's some deeper dives or some questions that I can maybe answer in a little bit more detail. So, the, the master agreement, I'll reiterate, has no dollar amount attached to it. Task Order One that's in front of you tonight does not have any specific scope of work. All it does is it defines the hourly rates, should we be used for on-call planning to assist with the implementation of Envision-Ellisville. So, there's not a scope of work attached, that's just an hourly rate schedule, but it would give the town the ability to say, "Help us do this." Task Order Two does have a dollar amount attached to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should've went first.
Yes, sorry.
No, it's not your fault, but I mean, we should've had you, you explain things a little different. Everybody getting heated, and, um, you explained very well.
Okay, thank you.
I agree. I think a lot of people really thought that this would be the one that, oh yeah, I think we probably should've went with this resolution first. But more you know, hindsight's 20/20, is it?
So are we dealing with, are we dealing with the resolution at the same time we're dealing with this next part of the agenda, or?
The resolution just, um, approves the master agreement.
Okay.
So we're on Resolution 11-2022, approving the master agreement, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Council discussion?
Again, I've made my feelings pretty clear. We need to, to move forward with this. I have no issues with any of these things. I just had the two, uh, things in MOU I wanted to call to the council's discretion. Um, I, I think particularly now that we're sans a planner for a while, I think that, uh, this and the task order number one is, uh, almost stupid not to do at this point.
Probably should wait till Dan gets back before we...
Yeah, he needs to have his say.
Was there any questions that we had for Ron?
Yes.
On this, would this be two different votes, approving the master agreement for professional services in the town of Ellisville, and then approving the resolution, or is that together?
The resolution actually approves the master agreement.
Okay, so if we...
So if you pass the resolution...
It passes that?
Yes. And like I said, I decided to do it this way, as opposed to just having you vote on the contract, because I wanted some language in here about why you were proceeding with the Taylor Group.
Okay.
So.
Dan, I waited to see if you had any questions for Ron Taylor or anybody else.
No, I appreciate your presentation. Thank you. And it does help clarify a little bit.
Okay, good.
And, you know, I'd just like to take a second to apologize, uh, excuse me a second, let me catch my breath, uh, if I offended anyone out there. Um, my gripe is not with you guys, so I, I apologize now if I offended anyone. My gripe is probably with the staff here, so I apologize again.
22, any public comment on this? Seeing none, action from the council?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 11-2022, approving the master agreement.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
No.
Pam Samples?
I've staying.
Motion carries.
Okay, and asks, is Task Order One between the town of Ellisville and TSWDG regarding the on-call program administration technical support that Mr. Taylor did upon? Would you have anything more to add to that, or Mike?
I do not, but Ron's setting it up pretty good.
Mike, I'll ask you, do you foresee us needing to take part in this aspect of things? Is there anything on the horizon you think we'd have to, or is it for in case we need it?
Uh, yes. Well, I think we can wait two weeks for anything besides the next-level trail design, so that'll be your next. But, yeah, I, I defer to the, the board members that think this has been rushed through and will not suggest anything until next meeting, and in fact, that's kind of the way we set it up for tonight.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, all this does is say, here's our fees for, if you use us.
Yeah, and I can't, I can't...
The resolution is what shouldn't have been passed tonight.
I agree with this.
No, I'm talking about Task, uh, Task Order One.
I apologize. Task Order One, just to make sure that you understand, is only for the technical support services for running the task forces and the Envision-Ellisville. So, it does have the hourly rates, it does have, um, a scope associated with it. So if this one is approved and signed, then we will begin that task force formation and putting together those things. So this isn't just on-call planning for a later phase, that was a different task order.
Okay.
And, and I would say that if you want to hold up on this one, and think about it, and read up on all the information we sent you, then that, I would be fine with that. I mean...
Are we able...
But isn't that pretty redundant, though? Because the resolution's already been passed, so...
We have not passed the resolution for task...
Not passed anything yet, except for the MOU.
Resolution 11-20-22 was not passed?
It was, that was just an agreement. We have not contracted with anything with, no specific tasks yet. As he explained, there's seven tasks, I believe, and this would be Task One and Two they're presenting to us to either approve or deny.
Well, then, yes, I would love to have two weeks, and for further notice, please don't ever drop this off before a meeting and expect me to vote on it.
Does this cause you any hard burn to wait for two weeks?
For the, on Task Order One?
No.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to table Task Order Number One between the town of Ellisville and TSWDG.
Can I make an amendment to that, Dan, for the next meeting, correct?
Yeah, well, usually when you table it, it's put on the next agenda, right? But, yeah, I'll make that amendment.
Okay.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
This is a motion to table, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, so we're Task Order Two, between the town of Ellisville and TSWDG regarding the next-level Trails design and engineering. Um, Mike, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, as I said before, um, we're moving forward with the next-level Trail Grant. We have expectations of, of us from DNR, and we do have a schedule, and waiting from here on out on the next-level Trail design will only put us behind and maybe even make us fail in some manner or... And so, I would propose that you approve this, so, um, we can utilize the Taylor Group and move forward with our next-level Trail Grant. The money assigned to this task are, um, it comes right out of the next-level Trail Grant and the amounts, um, so I swear we got the, the number.
Denise, do you have anything to add on that? Because I know you've been working on this.
Um, no, Mike's, um, correct. We do need to line up our design and engineering. Um, other governments also got the grant awards, so...
If you can talk, pull the mic over by...
Sorry.
That's all right.
Um, so also, other governments have also received their grants, and so, um, engineers and designs kind of getting backed up, and I know he probably has another project to work on as well.
Yeah, I would mention that they're working on, um, my path's next-level Trail Grant as well, that's in Owen County. It's people we're working with, uh, to provide trails eventually from Owen County to Monroe County, so they'll be local a lot on that project as well, so I just...
Okay, council discussion, discussion, sorry.
Again, on this one, I don't see a need to, to wait. I think any desire to wait or delay this only probably in the long run costs us money.
Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll kick it back to council action.
I would move that we approve Task Force Order Number Two between Town Ellisville and TSWDG, reference to the next-level Trail Grant design and engineering.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, on the, uh, discussion regarding redistricting, do we have anything new on that to report?
I, I apologize once again, it seems like that's all I'm doing tonight, but, um, I, I've missed the past couple of meetings. Have we had any discussion on this?
No. Um, I asked Sandy to put it on the agenda because there was some question, uh, a couple meetings ago, a few meetings ago, about whether or not the Town Council had to redraw its lines for the, for the wards or the redistricting, and the super short answer, hopefully, is you do not, as long as, um, the ward lines don't change because of your, your population shift. So it's my understanding that as of the last sentence, ce- census, Ellisville has gained, what, 300 new people maybe? And so, when I look back at the maps for the council wards that Kevin Tollati prepared, there is, to my eye, almost no difference between his current council ward map and the proposed council ward map. So there is a statute right on point that says that if the legislative body finds that, uh, redistricting is not required, you may adopt an ordinance certifying that the districts as they are currently are fine, um, and, uh, you can recertify it, and then a copy of that goes to the Circuit Court Clerk. So, uh, the same rules apply for recertifying as for the original districting. So as long as the districts are composed of contiguous territory, they're reasonably, reasonably compact, they contain as nearly as possible equal population, they don't cross a census block boundary, and they don't cross precinct lines, you don't have to go and redo it all. So I did put in a phone call this afternoon to, um... Sandy, who did you tell me to call? Sorry, it's been a long night.
She's over voter registration.
Karen Wheeler.
Karen Wheeler, thank you very much.
Thank you, that's who I talked to. And she said she would check for me, she didn't think the precinct lines, the precinct numbers would change, but she would get back to me. So as long as the precincts haven't changed, uh, I think you're good to go, and the next meeting I can have an ordinance ready, uh, whereby you just certify the districts or the wards as you have them now. I would like to do the ordinance a little different than we did it last time. Last time, um, 39 degrees did your redistricting, and in the ordinance, I had put in, um, their numbers for the blocks, which make no sense to anybody, probably except 39 degrees. So this time, when I do the ordinance, we'll attach a map, and I'll also list the precincts that are in each ward, which I think will make more sense. So that's how I'll do it the next time around.
So, so you're not, we're not going to redistrict then, correct?
As long as everything looks, if Kevin's charts or maps are correct, no, I don't think you actually have to redistrict and pay somebody to redraw the lines.
So, but we're not going with Kevin's redi- redistricting, correct? We're just keeping the old one?
Correct.
Okay.
With the addition of the annexed areas that were...
Right, because that's the only thing that would change. But again, the population only went up by 300 people, so as long as the, the list of things I read to you is still true, equal population, reasonably compact, doesn't cross precinct lines, you don't have to do a formal redistricting plan.
And we do this every census, is that correct?
Every 10 years, yes.
Okay.
If you are going to redistrict, it has to be done by the end of the year of December. But that's only because you, you got to pass a little bit, you got a little extra time because of the delay in getting out the census data results because of COVID. So, but anyway, if you decide to do it, it has to be done by the end of the year.
Has everyone on the council had a chance to review their district? I can say mine's fine as is.
Um, yes, mine's fine. I mean, in 10 year, in the next few years, mine will grow very largely, but I'm fine with it. Because there's a lot of development in my ward, which is good.
I'm sure that in 2030, we're going to have to definitely change things up.
I would agree.
I'll be honest with you, since we all run at large, I don't know that it makes much of a difference.
Yeah, I was going to ask that question, Darla, how do we switch it to at-large instead of wards?
We're at-large now.
What do you mean?
Technically...
Well, you've got a hybrid system, technically, under your code. So you can switch it to at-large if you want to, and I would have to look into how you do that, but the way you're, I mean, go ahead, Sandy.
I, I was just...
Or maybe...
We're divided in wards, and council member has signed wards, everyone gets to vote on everyone, but it's not really at-large.
No, but everybody gets to vote, that was what I was talking about.
At-large would mean we could live anywhere.
Right.
Right.
You could literally have five people next door to each other.
Right.
If you liked to live.
Exactly.
But then the question, this begs the question, is it something we want to discuss in the next, in the future, nothing tonight, uh, that we just vote per ward?
No, because I'm afraid you wouldn't have enough per ward to make a...
That could be...
If you got five people in one ward vote, I mean, when you're only having 300, 600 people vote...
Right.
Yep.
It would be very easy to sway an election for one neighborhood.
Two or three people.
Yeah, the way it's set up is fine. I, I was just curious about at-large.
In the future, it could be in the next 10 years, I mean, it's something we, we have to address, but...
I agree, maybe next, next census, if everything's changed, then we can discuss something further.
Or we have a bunch of developments.
Probably none of us will be on the board then, but you never know. Hell, I might be, just to aggravate everyone.
All right, any public comment on our wards discussion? Supervisor comments? Actually, privilege of the floor first, sorry. Anybody want to say anything not on the agenda? I want to thank you. Supervisor comments?
I'll start. First of all, um, I'd like to thank Denise and Kip, Community Crossing, um, Grant, that started implementing it. You might have noticed some new paved streets around. It's always like one of the best times of year when we get the grant. Thank you for your hard work on that. And, um, also, uh, park equipment has arrived, and if you notice, we're working in a couple of areas. I think, uh, Campbell's Park will be done first, and then we'll probably finish Town Hall, getting equipment up there. Once equipment's in place, then they come in and pour the pad, uh, safety pad all around it, and then once that's done, we'll start working on some of the amenities we have planned for around-the-park equipment. It's pretty exciting, can't wait to see a kid go down the slide. So, last thing, um, I'd say that's, um, a positive, uh, is the vegetable stands open for business in front of the, um, Jiffy Treats. So Pat, Walter, uh, thank you for putting the vegetable stand back up, it's iconic, it's got great vegetables, and, uh, I just think it's like the best part of summer. So anyway, thanks for that. Uh, lastly, pardon?
I'm counting down the time for them to get a can opener and watermelon.
Yes, well, it's, you know...
It's not season, I said I'm counting down the time, I understand.
Pat, you're out of it.
They're great, I'm not a big tomato person, but...
Absolutely.
I'm just impressed with this.
So, uh, here's a warning to the board, um, budget process getting ready to start. If you don't want to feel like you, we've waited to the last minute to tell you something, you need to get involved early. And it's going to be done in earnest, um, we are going to... We are going to have an aggressive budget this year. By the time we get done with it, I'm pretty sure there'll be some hard feelings, some bloodlet, we might even have to send somebody out of the room, who knows? But we are going to look at the lit money, and I'm going to be really pushing hard for utilizing most of that money for retention and support of the town employees. I have a plan, and it's pretty bold, and so I plan on getting yelled at at some point. And so, anyway, get involved, ask questions, find out what we're talking about. I'll try to send you a report after every meeting. Our first meeting's Thursday at 1:00. 12:30.
Can you actually send me when your meetings are and stuff? Can we attend the meetings? I mean.
We, I'll send them to you the day after we have them. I'm just kidding, so.
Five minutes before the meeting?
Yes, five minutes before, you'll get a warning.
We'll see the budget here.
We, if we have those meetings and council attend, remember, only two of us can attend at a time without advertising it. So if you're going to attend and Mike sends that out, please reply all and let us know.
Are we allowed to not let the board talk while they're there?
You can try.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're also, we can allow you not to have your budget, so there's that.
Well, it's sausage making, for sure.
Yes, it is, gotcha.
So anyway, I wanted to let them know about that. And other than that, thank you for your support on moving forward with the invasion plan.
I'm good, thank you. Thank you for your support for the.
I do have a question for you, Jimmy. Do you think there's a way, because in coordinating our budget, and I've expressed to you, and I don't know if I've expressed to the council, we've kind of got on the same page with RBB and their budget. I just kind of, just was kind of hoping to get some insight. What was the person's name you thought I should?
Matt Irwin.
Matt Irwin, okay.
Yeah, he's Assistant Superintendent, but he's in charge of finances, so he'll be able to tell you all what we're thinking about in the future.
Because they're a big part of the growth of Ellisville, and we have a finite tax base.
Our enrollment's going up, though, so you know what that means, so.
It means you get more money from the state.
Yeah, well, true, but you need more, you need more space, too, so.
Yep.
I'm next. I got to talk about the exciting stuff, water and wastewater. Just to give you a little bit of heads up, I consulted with Darla about moving forward on making some large purchases at the wastewater treatment plant. One being a UV system for disinfection. The one we have now is on its last leg. I think I told you about some of this stuff earlier in the year, just letting you know it's, I'm going to get some sealed bids. Should those bids be sent to the clerk's office?
Yes.
So they'll be, I'll make sure those, I'll get requests for proposals out. Some other things that are going on down there, we need some painting. I think I'd sent you some quotes for asphalt. I'll probably ask for those again and have them sent as sealed bids to the clerk's office as well. And then we'll open all that stuff at appropriate time, so the funding's there. Another thing you probably all know that's going on is that we are having rate studies done for both our water and wastewater treatment, which you voted on, but that is ongoing. And in light of tonight, I'd just keep that in your mind, so you know it's coming, but it's all got.
Invited to come down to the wastewater plant and Jeff will kind of give you a.
On-site, look at what we're going to spend a lot of money on. It's worth, it's probably worth it.
They've got a big swimming pool there, don't they? Or is that not a pool?
We've got a couple tanks you can swim in, yes.
Will lunch be served?
It's not the budget.
Got one quick thing, Sandy, one of these clarifies.
The vehicles that we purchased, when we sent the proposal in for your packet last time, we were looking at the government bid Ford Explorers. By the time that meeting came around, those were, you might get them this year. So we ended up going with the Durangos. They're supposed to be in next week or the week after. Still fits within our money, the CUMFUND, all that, no problem, so. But the packet you were presented was for the Explorer, what they call the Interceptor, and it's actually the Durango.
Darla, do we need to change that on a resolution or anything? Does it matter since the money's?
I don't think it matters.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, our town manager kind of robbed me of some of my information that I was going to tell you, so the play sets. Also, he's right on EMB, he has been in town and doing some of the work already, and I just want to let you know that Mustang Drive, Impatience Street, Violet Court, and the culvert under Reeves Road has all been done. They had to, with the rain delays and stuff, they're really behind on their work, like everybody else is, so they're going to come back to finish up some of the stuff. That's part of the grant that we get received from last year, the July call. So we still got the monies to go out yet for this year. You know, this year's budget, or this year's grant was 388,000. The July of last year's grant was 231,000. And while they were in town and was in the area of all the other work going on, they went ahead and resurfaced Reeves Road. That was actually for this year's grant. So a lot going on, they're going to be back again in a couple of weeks and finishing up what they got left to do.
Denise?
Planning's really busy, having new development, coming in a nine-lot development. I could tell you more, but I'd be here all night, we're busy, so.
That's a good thing to hear, though.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to introduce Nicole, if she wouldn't mind to stand.
Noel.
This is Noel, I'll always call her Nicole. Her name is Truly Noel Conyer, and she is going to be our new Deputy Clerk Treasurer. She's going to start on the 25th, and she does have the ambition of running for Clerk Treasurer in 18 months, so Nicole.
Noel.
Noel. Oh, my God.
It's going to be Nicole.
I've said, I've said Nicole way too many times.
Just think of Christmas.
I apologize.
Or maybe she is, who knows?
William, I do have one more thing.
Okay.
Why don't you talk about the planning handbook, or the personnel handbook? Just mention it.
Oh, yes.
Okay, yeah, you, a flyback about a month ago, six weeks, you approved of us getting our personnel policy redone. We have had the first revision. William, Mike and I met with the representative, she went, made, went through all the changes. There are some things by law that we need to change in our policy, and she was going to send me a new copy after we went over it together, and with some red text, so you can see what's been changed or what's suggested to be changed. When I get that copy, I will send that out to all of the council, and we do plan to have a supervisor's meeting also to go over that. But she, our meeting was three hours and 20 minutes, and I think she taught us all several things, so.
All right, council comments?
I'll go first. Quick question, where are we at with hiring a planning?
Next meeting, I will be making a recommendation. I will try to get out an email sometime Saturday before. Actually, I'll try to get it out sometime this week, the next couple of days, and I expect comment.
I mean, I just want to hear what you've got to say.
But I'll try to lay out how, what, went through, trying to figure out what to do about.
Where did you post the job, just?
Well, we put it on the A-Web site, and I think Kevin. Put it on the planner's website.
Did we get a lot of response?
Zero response.
Zero response.
We have had one, we have had one.
I also asked, I talked to Monroe County about, you know, if they had any good ideas, and they were looking for a planner as well, so they wanted to know if I had any good ideas. So I'm thinking if there was a planning job, they'll probably go to the Monroe County because they pay more. But anyway, they're hard to find. I tried to be planner one day, but it didn't work.
Darla?
We did get one application submitted in a brown envelope, so. I haven't opened it or anything.
Darla, if we're discussing specifics of candidate, would that be executive session or would that be a public meeting?
The general job description, the pay and all that is certainly public.
Right.
But otherwise, I believe you can interview in executive session, and then a vote has to be taken at a public meeting.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I would like to be involved in the interview, if no one else cares. I was with the past planner, and it was great insight, see their qualifications, so.
Actually, I do kind of object to that, because you're on the planning commission.
I was back then, too.
Well, now we're talking about now.
Can I ask why?
I just think it's kind of improper that if you're a council member and you're on the planning commission, now we're going to need to separate some of this stuff out just a little bit, again.
So Darla, does that mean I can't vote? Is that excluding me and Pam for voting for a planner?
No, but again, if we're making recommendations as to who, you're just voting on yes or no. I object to sitting in interviews and, you know, trying to maneuver the process.
I don't think there's anything against it, and I'd ask legal, too.
You ask opinion, I gave my opinion.
Right. But I would like clarification from legal.
I don't think Scott's saying it's illegal.
No, I just had an objection to it.
I think my email, I got it.
Okay. Any other comments from the council?
I have a question for Mike.
Yes.
We don't have to go discuss it tonight.
I think you're.
But the email you sent separate, so I'm getting from like, on our, in our planning department, are we going to keep it full-staffed? Because the way you wrote in that email, like, basically outsourcing.
You just shut your mic off, Pam?
I think.
No, I did not mean, when I talked about.
It just, the way it's wrote, it sounds like.
I meant to, actually, in the budget, I'll just throw it out here, we plan on asking for a planning tech for more help, and so eventually we'll have Ronnie's position, we'll have four positions when it's all said and done, there'll be a planner, assistant planner, and planning tech, and then rent, building inspector, thank you. So with that said, with all the activity in town, they will still be busy to the point. When you think about all the duties and responsibilities that we expect out of the planning, outsourcing some of this extra work that's come our way, and the monies that we have to spend on it, I think it's a perfect solution to, I mean, right now, we need a staff of six or seven at least, and this outsourcing kind of helps us with that peak, which I talked about in the email. You know, we're really kind of peaking on need here, and maybe it'll go away in the future, but if it doesn't, we can change what we do later, or when we find out how well Ron's group serves us, we may just want to stick with how we're doing our business now. I mean, because once a peak's gone, a lot of times, you know, outsourced help, if they're not needed, they'll just go work somewhere else, and we forego the cost of carrying an extra person or an extra three people. So it just seems like a good, good way to spend our money.
Now, that outsourced help, you weren't like, day in, day out in the office, going out doing code enforcement?
No, not at all. It's to allow them to do that. I mean, we're getting, we're so busy, we can't get anything done. I know it's a weird saying, but.
It's time-consuming to provide the ordinance for us or to update ourselves.
Right.
I'd like to see more grants come out of, I mean, look at the two grants we got, the Next Level Trail Grant, the Community Crossing Grant. Who knows how many grants we could get if they had time to work on it.
To be clear, it's not saying that they're doing a poor job, it's that they're, they're doing such a great job. We've got people coming in and backlogged.
Yeah, right now, they only have two, and it's kind of the Alamo right now, so.
Well, you're fending off everybody, so good job.
I guess I do have one thing about budget, it's just a comment. I hope we're looking at substantial raises for the employees, bearing the economic time that we're in and the need for absolute retention of what we've got. I would just like to put my two cents in that I would like to see us strongly consider that.
You will see a very aggressive move on that part.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no more business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I found out at the conference after 30 years that there is no motion required here.
Really?
The president may adjourn the meeting.
Okay, well, in that case, we're adjourned.